Well, hello free people of the Rocky Mountain region and welcome to this Free State Colorado interview. Today I'm joined by Natalie Menton, one of Colorado's Liberty Rock stars, who has successfully stopped tax increases, eliminated the liquid food tax, served as an RTD board director, and the list goes on and on. Well Natalie, I hope you are well and thank you for joining me today.
I'm doing well, thanks and glad to be here.
Well Natalie, the Colorado Legislature for the third year in a row has held a special session. This year they addressed a budget shortfall in AI regulation. Now Natalie, the consequences of government policies passed during the special session, and the general session for that matter, have a wide ranging effect on the Colorado economy. But you know, it seems like our corporate media barely discusses these policies. Why do you think that is?
Um, I think, well, to start with, first of all, I think there's a shortage of journalists out there in the industry. You see more and more media outlets going away, so a lot more dependence on grassroots activism, podcasts, a lot of different independent organizations. So as those are starting to now get more formed and organized and covering these different things, because it's a lot to cover. That's basically the end of the story. It's a lot to cover and we need a lot of eyes on the ground. So that's why people like you, myself, there's a list of other variety of activists that can be there with, in all of these different meeting rooms and keep a track of what's going on. I think that's, that's partly why it seems like there's not that much coverage. Also, the media, frankly, when they have an hour long broadcast, this concentration on a political event is going to be about three to five minutes at a time out of that hour. They're going to cover sports, because you gotta do that, right? So important, anyway, we'll go off on that. But there's all these other little things that'll fill that hour, along with the commercials which actually pay for all those people. So we're just seeing a smaller market, more of a dependence on these independent outlets. And again, that's why, you know, when we can get more people down there and be feeding out the information, when you got to testify, how to keep track of it, we'll, we'll be far ahead. And if we've got to do a fourth extraordinary session, which, I mean, should we take bets right now? What's the chances that we're gonna have another one? I would say actually probably pretty decent, the role we're on. The more people that can get involved, the better, because honestly, when you're down there at the Capitol, it's hard to keep track of what's going on. A lot of it is hurry up and wait, hurry up and wait, hurry up and wait, hurry up and wait. And people are like, I gotta take a break, I gotta go home. And so, fair enough, because I've experienced this in prior extraordinary sessions, just when you think you can take a little break and you're heading out the door to go, they all the committee hearing, and then you miss it. This happened, okay, now I'm going to start ranting. This happened to me again this year. This is not the first time, I hope it's the last time. So I'll stop there because then I'll go off on, I don't want to waste all my energy, we got a lot to go through here.
Well Natalie, those are some great points. I think it is so important for us as individuals to really step up and try and provide some coverage, some information out to the public. You know, we do have people like Corey Gaines, Sherry Pye, everybody at Complete Colorado, of course, and others across Colorado who are really trying to give the public more information. And tonight, I'm hoping that we can shed some light on what the Colorado Legislature has been doing to our business owners, our taxpayers, and our Colorado workers. So let's jump into, jump into some slides and explain some of the key points and share some of the experiences that, that we had down at the state Capitol in Denver during this special session. How does that sound?
That sounds like a lot of fun and I'll try not to go into PTSD.
So folks, you know, it has been a total financial failure of our state government to keep the budget balanced. You know, Colorado unfortunately is really one of the only states that's having this kind of issue. And I have to say, a lot of the blame lies at the Democratic majority, of course, but the legislature in general for failure to, to keep their books straight and a failure to spend their money that they're taking from us wisely. Is that fair to say Natalie?
It would be, especially because a lot of what they want to blame things on was COVID. The fact of the matter is, they got a huge amount of money from the feds which disagree with. I mean, that could not have been the case. But then they expanded programs and that's what they've done. When they knew they were spending more than they should, basically. So that's where, this was not a one year thing. This was a series of years where there have been choices by them to expand programs, add full-time employees, a variety of different things that have led up to this. And they weren't, they can't say that they weren't warned.
Their points.
They've, they've shifted the money, besides coming through with bigger programs and revenue. They've also eaten into our, our Tabor refunds through this. And we've already done videos on that, so I won't go into that. So they, they've created this mess. And if they want to blame the feds and the big beautiful bill, I call it baloney. I think there's things are not even counter, calculating in there. So anyway, let's go.
Yeah, I mean, it's so important to know that our state government has more money than ever, more of our tax money than ever before. And yet they still seem to be running a shortfall. But you know, this shortfall is a good thing. I mean, I'm sure many of you watching this have seen our Democratic legislators, you know, being so upset during this special session and all their media appearances, really just complaining, and I would even say whining about the loss of tax revenue that they're got under this big beautiful bill, as you mentioned. But you know, the reality is folks, falling tax revenue is a great thing because it means less money for politicians and more money for Colorado workers. I mean, ultimately, that's important, that's our economy, that's our jobs, that's our livelihood. And you know, we can't let that be ignored. We have to bring that up every time we get some of our money back and are able to deprive these politicians of our money.
Yeah, I mean, if people keep more money in their pocket with lower income taxes, probably that means they're gonna do one of two things. Save money, or they're gonna go spend money. They go spend money, they're gonna be spending, you know, generating tax, sales tax revenue. So it's a win, it's win-win. I think it's what you were going after and I agree.
Win-win for sure. And you know, the reality is folks, as you probably know, these greedy politicians will never have enough of your money. Whenever it's a tax increase, a mill levy increase, whatever it is, whatever you see on the ballot, anytime they're trying to take your money, that's never going to be enough. They're always going to take more and more and more, they're always finding more ways to spend it. So be warned for sure.
And I'll note, we've covered that a couple of times with the Ref C money, thirty-three billion dollars that the state government got to keep since 2005, compared to our eleven billion in taper refunds. They don't ever, they don't really mention that money. They don't mention House Bill thirteen eleven as to money going now to services instead of coming back into our pocket. So it completely falls in line with your last statement, they will never have enough. That's why they're getting ready to run this. It's, I'm not going to use their wording, but I'll call it what I'd call it, punitive income tax that they just kicked off and they're going to be circulating to get signatures, which will be another revenue windfall. Anyways, go ahead.
Wow, well, you know, we were down at the state Capitol. I was only able to make it down, one day down there, the first day of the extraordinary session or special session as it's called. But Natalie, I really appreciate the fact that you were down there for multiple days, able to speak up for taxpayers, for our taxpayers' bill of rights, and you know, question these legislators and really challenge them because it's nearly impossible for the general public to participate during these special sessions. Like you said, these committee hearings are not really advertised, they're not really scheduled in advance. Nobody really knows where the bills are going to be heard. Nobody sees the bills until hours before they're introduced into these committees, when they're going to be testified, testified upon and voted on. So you know, it's really a Herculean task to, to have an impact, to really try and have a voice as a taxpayer advocate, as a liberty activist during the special session. But what are some of the impressions you had down at the Capitol this year?
Well, I would say, number one, I'm disappointed that, again, bills and fiscal notes weren't available for that, that really early review. The bills were up, but what we've learned over many years in this, many people advertise this. Instead of reading a legislative bill, the actual text, the first thing you do is go to the fiscal note. It's laid out layman's terms, you got the dollar amounts. So even though the bills were advertised, once a committee started, that's then at that point where they would be preparing the fiscal note. I mean, they prepared it, but for public consumption, it was available just shortly before the bill was going to be heard for testimony. Timing, going back to how come there's, you know, not that much coverage? Well, if you got like one news outlet and they've got one reporter, same for a citizen, you're down there by yourself, you might find that one committee hearing is happening on this side of the hallway and another one at the same time you want to testify is across the hallway. How do you even physically do that? So when they knew they were going to have the special session, I mean, they just really got to change the process. There, I see, I can just see it, so many people do not even show up to these things anymore and testify because they've gone through it before and it's so frustrating. It's tiring. It's difficult to consume even during a regular session. A special session is like two times speed. And we'll explain that in a minute here. So it was really frustrating that we were seeing the same old story. Businesses are bad, businesses get this, get that. The federal government Trump's bad, nothing about Colorado and the amount of additional revenue that they've been allowed to keep under Tabor and the money that they've taken through what I consider improper bills. They don't ever, they really weren't looking at themselves as part of the problem. And taxpayers, businesses, they were given second thought, you were really just part of the process. Your voice really, really wasn't, felt like you were heard. And I hate to say that because then people don't show up. But if there are more of us down there, we, we can make an impact, you know, if this comes up again. That, that's my general, I guess that doesn't sound very positive, but comes off the frustration of, you know, three years of this.
Yeah, no, well said. I think you brought up some great points there and stuff that people need to know and we need to be aware of. You know, this is lack of transparency, of the lack of a representative government, the lack of public participation. It's, it's totally anti-democratic on so many levels, you know? So it is worthy of being exposed and talked about. It can't be talked about enough because so often, I feel like these legislators, they really don't want the public to be aware of what they're doing. They don't want the media scrutiny, they don't want to advertise how they're making life more difficult for businesses and employers and the people who actually drive our state forward. Perfect. So how did they quote unquote balance the budget? So if you may remember folks, you heard that this one billion dollar kept being the word that they kept throwing out there, a billion dollar, the Democrats were saying a billion dollar hole in the budget. Trump blew a billion dollar hole in the budget. There's a billion dollar budget shortfall, all these different ways they phrased it in the media and elsewhere on social media. But the reality is, yeah, sure, you know, taxes were reduced, there was more money for Coloradans to keep that they earned, less money stolen by the politicians. So there was a budget shortfall on some level. So how did the Democratic majority decide to balance this budget down there? And it's balanced in quotes because we all know that they're just one fiscal cycle away from being totally out of balance again here. So one of the first things they did, and this is one of the big takeaways folks, this is one of the big talking points you need to share with your neighbors, with your coworkers, with everybody else out there, is they raised taxes on businesses. You know, they raised taxes on businesses, we're going to get into the exact numbers here in a minute. Number two, they took money from the state reserve. And Natalie, you brought up a great point in a previous video we did, how you know, all these legislators seem to complain that because of the taxpayers' bill of rights Tabor, they're unable to save money, that they're so constrained. But hey, here we are, we have a fifteen percent reserve requirement and they were able, Tabor allows them to save plenty of money in this kind of quote unquote rainy day fund and for other emergencies. And you know, they're able to use that money in this situation, am I right, am I right there?
Yeah, and just note, just protect, you know, geeky type political stuff. There's a Tabor reserve required and then outside of that. So not only did they have the Tabor reserve, which they're required to do under taxpayers' bill of rights, but the reserve you just spoke about is beyond that. So again, you know, for many years, Tabor doesn't allow us to save, Tabor doesn't allow us to save, blah, blah, blah. Baloney, baloney. It's about priorities, it's about spending priorities. And you know, it indicates there that there's a lot of other things they stated about Tabor that are also not incorrect. And so you're right, if for issue number one, that is what they raised in taxes on businesses. I'm, we're going to cover a little bit of it, but there was a slew of things down there. I mean, we could go for forty-five minutes just about that, which is not what we want to do. So, and then item three, what was that? Just a little, I'll let you cover it, but I think you covered it pretty well with a shocked look on the video there. So go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, actually some spending cuts, actually cut some spending, oh my gosh, can you believe it? Total shocker, you know, you know, I know there was some snow on Pike's Peak the other day. Or you know, I wouldn't be surprised if, if we had the winning lottery ticket or something like that, an eclipse going on because they actually, once in a blue moon, actually did some spending cuts they had to. And you know, it might be a good time Natalie, what if we just jumped into some, what some of those spending cuts look like?
Yeah, let's do a little bit.
So this is, and I'll have all the links at FreeStateColorado.com, of course, folks. This is one of the executive orders out of the special session from our governor Jared Polis here, talking about kind of what they did. So his is him kind of recapping the background, the purpose of the special session and kind of what he did to, to really cut some funding. And really, I mean, it's interesting, the state legislature really didn't cut any funding whatsoever. All they did was basically pass a bill saying, we're giving the governor, you know, recognizing his ability to, to basically make his own cuts. And they left it entirely up to the governor to decide where they were going to cut the money here. So the governor here says on point C, again, I'll let FreeStateColorado.com, you can read this all yourself, but the following programs and services totaling a hundred and two point nine million dollars in general fund and cash funds are suspended in whole or part for the duration of this executive order through the end of fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. So this is a big one here and I think people might be shocked to see this. Now this is Jared Polis's executive order, this isn't some news article headline here, but Department of Corrections, three million six hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred dollars appropriated for medical services sub-program transgender healthcare from the general fund is suspended and not available for expenditure. Now Natalie, I don't know about you, but did you, but I didn't know that they're spending over three million dollars on transgender healthcare for the Department of Corrections. Did you, were you aware of this?
I think I heard about this at some point, but I was like, one of those things that you go like, I can't believe I just heard that, so I'm just not gonna, I can't, you know? I mean, what do you make of that? We people in jail and transgender healthcare and that's extra? No. I, I mean, I, I just can't remember when exactly I did hear it, but I think I did. And again, it's just, there's, I don't know how you explain that. Sometimes it's like something you're hearing is, it sounds so strange, bizarre that we would spend the public money on that with other priorities, especially Department of Corrections, that you just don't absorb it. Go ahead, keep going, there's more here.
Definitely, definitely. And a lot of it is this Department of Healthcare Policy and Financing, if you, if you know, most people probably.
Programs that you don't even know what they are until you dig through like, I don't know how many documents, how many documents we have to go through to figure out where this money is actually really going. And how many NGOs are getting a bite of it?
Great questions.
Agents, you know, consultants, and with this, this premium plan and this, this behavioral health program. And I've talked about it before, I'm a subscriber on BidNet where I see these government contracts for bids. Every day I get these emails with all these things government is spending on. And these are, you know, some of these things like this, just.
Oh, it's wild and it's really hard to track too. I mean, this is just in this one executive order here, you know, nearly fifty-five million dollars for medical services premiums. What are they for? It doesn't really say, you know, you have to really dig in and find out. I mean, how transparent is this for the public to even know what this money is? Medical service premiums from the Adult Dental Fund, two and a half million dollars there. You know, sixteen million dollars for behavioral health capitulation payments. So they're paying for some baby behavioral health programs. You know, one point four million dollars for the adult comprehensive services. What does that even mean? Where's that money even going, like you said? But apparently, you know, it's not a priority, or at least the governor sees, hey, these are some places where we can make some cuts. The list goes on and on folks, and it's such like bureaucratic speak. Yeah, there's some money, money in there for immigration, you know, some of the money not going to, you know, reproductive healthcare for individuals not eligible for Medicaid. Some of the different issues there, you know, here's children lacking access to immigrate, due to immigration status for their health benefits, a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars for that. So the money's just here, there, everywhere, and you can really dig into it if you'd like. Again, links at Free State Colorado, but that, just to give you a little taste, it's shaving stuff off the edges, stuff we probably shouldn't even be spending money on anyway. Not necessarily any core functions of government, of course. And it just begs the question Natalie, how many of these other programs are even out there? If they can find a hundred million dollars to cut on, you know, just by going through some of these programs, how much more can they cut if they really were pressed to? I, I have to think that there's a lot of money out there.
I would agree, I don't think we're, you know, zero-based budgeting is a really got a lot of features, benefits to it. Start from the bottom and prove why you need each dollar. That's not how the government operates right now. If it is, we would see a lot of differences, but anyway.
So like I said, one of the biggest takeaways here folks, this is the, one of the big talking points is that is tax increases on Colorado employers, that's one of the big consequences here out of the special session. And in a place in the state of Colorado where life is so unaffordable, where people are struggling to get by, where employers and businesses are fleeing the state due to the high cost of fees and regulations, we have our state legislature coming out and here's, here's the headline from Sean Boyd, the great Sean Boyd over at CBS News Colorado saying, quote, "Colorado special session winds down with increased taxes for businesses and no agreement on artificial intelligence regulation." So the reality is folks, the special session is not making anybody's lives better off, it's making our lives more difficult, contrary to what these politicians claim. Digging into the article a little bit, and this is the big takeaway folks, three hundred and thirty million dollars a year in tax increases. So just to read this brief synopsis, this is a clip from that article, which of course will be linked at Free State Colorado, but quote, "State lawmakers passed four bills raising taxes on Colorado businesses as a special legislative session stretched into a fifth day. Governor Jared Polis called lawmakers back to work after President Trump's big beautiful bill cut taxes, leaving the state without enough revenue to cover expenses. This year's budget shortfall, this year's budget is short seven hundred and fifty million dollars. The four bills raise about three hundred and thirty million dollars a year, wow. Democrats say businesses are taking the biggest hit because they got the biggest breaks in the big beautiful bill and Coloradans on food stamps and Medicaid need help more." Well, there you go folks, I mean, is Natalie, is there a better summary of the special session than this little clip from Sean Boyd's article?
I think you covered it very well.
Yeah, brief to the point, but.
The, the Democrats saying, businesses, we know we're hurting you, but that's okay, you're getting something over here. So what this basically kind of gets you more to like a zero? Because it's coming, you keep it more in one pocket, we're going to take a chunk more out of the other pocket. I, I, it was a meeting recently that the chair of the Democrat Party held with party insiders. And they were talking about messaging points. And the chair of the, the Dem state party even said to the audience, a Democrat, our democratic policy over the last two decades has been anti-business. And, and he felt it personally when he actually went to go start something on a, his property to hold events. And it took him two years to get set up. Not only, you know, the taxation issue, but also the regulation issue. So you know, that's another thing that's involved here, it's not just dollars, it's more burden on businesses. And we'll show that here in a minute.
Definitely, big time. Let's click over here, now this video clip about the House, the House bill for the vendor fee. Natalie, do you want to set this up here before I hit play?
Yeah, so basically when you, this has been a policy that was established a long time, where if a business is collecting sales tax, being the tax collector for the government, the business is allowed to keep a percentage, it's varied over the years, but it helps to cover the processing, the costs involved with being not only tax collector, but a tax reporter and remitter to the state. And we're going to hear in testimony the sponsor's opinion of what this was for businesses. And then after that completes, then I'm going to point out a couple of things. Like there was only a few of us to testify on this. And I'll mention a couple of things that should have been brought forward, so go ahead.
Currently, we pay businesses to collect and remit state sales taxes. We allow businesses which have sales of under a million dollars per filing period or up to ten million dollars a year to retain four percent of that two point nine percent state sales tax with a cap of a thousand dollars per file, a thousand dollars per filing period. This is a subsidy to businesses known as the vendor fee discount. This vendor discount was created in nineteen thirty-nine, before there were calculators, before there was inventory and invoicing software and when businesses had to physically tally receipts and file paper forms. Today, in an era of digital transactions, online filing and tax preparation software, remitting sales taxes is much faster, simpler and cheaper than it was in nineteen thirty-nine. The rationale for this discount, which is indeed a subsidy or an allowance that the business takes from the sales tax collected, has faded, but its impacts on our budget remain very real.
Anybody who's had a business or, and otherwise, you could probably imagine. You pay bookkeepers, you pay for QuickBooks or some kind of other accounting software. And these days you don't even get to buy it anymore, you rent it month to month for the subscription. So you never really get out of that payment. But on top of that, whereas nineteen, whatever she said, nineteen forty, let's say, there's another thing that a lot of merchants, majority face right now that is quite costly and actually, and that is when you take credit card payments from somebody. So let's say you say, you sell a two thousand dollar item and there's sales tax on top of that, and the person pays with their Visa card because they want to get their travel reward points. The business actually is paying, or not paying, when they get the money from the credit card processing company, they're taking off two and a half at minimum, many times three or four percent of the cost of that charge for processing it through credit card. So when somebody is collecting sales tax for the state and that customer pays with a credit card, you're taking a loss. So when Senator Kathy Kip there says it's a subsidy, I think, I think her former occupation was a teacher, I'm going off memory. And Faith Winner, I don't, the other sponsor, I don't know that she's ever had a job besides being a consultant. Anyway, shows these people have very, very little understanding of what a business goes through and the additional costs involved. And so when they took away the sales tax vendor fee, I forget what the fiscal note was, that means that now businesses are further enslaved in this process and actually having to pay out of pocket, because that's what happens. It's not, it's zeroed out now. Now you're paying out of pocket again, not only for a bookkeeper, but for the credit card processing piece. It's an unknown amount of what this would actually value up to. But that was a kind of really disrespect that was present with many of these bills. Oh, these businesses are getting this special this and that. And so I wanted to make sure to include this clip because having had to do sales tax and know, you know, it doesn't really get easier, it really doesn't. Matter of fact, there's more complexities, different definitions, software, is it taxed or not? Having to, it's not only just bookkeepers anymore, you practically need a lawyer to interpret the law. So I, I wanted to cover that, that, that's really, to me, it summed up. You businesses, it's just lucky to even be collecting sales tax for us and you're not doing enough for your part, so boo hoo on you. We're going to take that and sorry if it cuts into your money, we just know you're billionaires. So you know, you can't, it's not like you're struggling to save for your college kid fund or you know, actually pay for six dollar pound hamburger, you know, at the seventy-three percent back. Anyway, all right, okay. So it's just disturbing when we don't have nearly enough business owners frankly, and the state legislature people have actually put in those ten, twelve hour day, days, you know, putting paychecks out there, helping to pay people. Instead, what we have is a bunch of frankly, public lawyers, people who have made their whole livelihood off the public system and never had to go out there and work and do what a business have to do. And that's really frustrating, that, I wish we could change that, but all right, let's keep going here before I keep going.
No, great points, it's absolutely terrible.
Businesses struggle, they, you know, you don't, you don't get tied in office business owner. And these legislators, geez, I mean, total disconnect, disconnect to the backbone of our economy.
Definitely, and they are tax collectors, they are agents of the state.
Then they gave all that money to Sundance. That's what's really despicable. Talk about, that's one of the points, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting. But they gave what, thirty, how many millions of dollars was that? They gave away to Sundance some artsy-bartsy thing from Utah or something. And the simple little mom and pop, they can't, you know, cover the bookkeeper and the credit card processing. You know, that's, that's.
Right, no, and those are all great points. And you know, they're turning these business owners, businesses in Colorado agents of the state on some level because they are responsible for collecting these taxes and giving it to the state and keeping track of it all. There is a cost associated with that, right? Not just the time, but the computer work, the staffing, like you said, everything you need to do and you got to get it right. I mean, this is a part of paying taxes to the state government. If you screw it up, you can be shut down, you can go to jail, right? I mean, it's, it's serious stuff. And so then for them to say, you know, these, these greedy legislators, these greedy politicians to come out and say, oh, you, you're just lucky we even let you operate a business here in Colorado, you know? You should be thankful that you have to, you get to collect our money for us that we're stealing from productive people. But it's absolutely shameful and it's a total attack on businesses. Any, any legislator who voted for this should be disqualified from office, shouldn't be. it's absolutely shameful and it's a total attack on businesses. Any, any legislator who voted for this should be disqualified from office, shouldn't be totally laughed out of the state or shamed out of their office because it's absolutely despicable what they're doing to Colorado businesses, employers, the people who are actually producing in our state.
Yes. I agree.
So one of the big, uh, key factors, uh, like we talked about this special session is so anti-democratic on so many levels, you know, the limiting debate, limiting speech, not just from the public, but Natalie, also from the legislators. Can you tell, what, can you tell us about this rule 14?
Well, and again, just to lead up to this, I mean, first of all, when you go into testify, you're getting three minutes on a lucky day and two minutes. And so you like hurry up, hurry up, wait, wait, wait. And then boom, you get two minutes and it's done. All right, great. So then you elect representatives, right? And they're supposed to be able to speak for you. Well, we have seen this, this is not the only year where they pull out rule 14, uh, to limit debate. Or even worse, another one which will cut off debate. So here, this was a series of bills that, just to give the background on this, we had House Bill 1003, 1004, 1005, 1006. In each of those, in the, the way the process is, you have introduction, that's like first reading committee. Second reading is on the floor. That's where amendments are proposed. It, you know, decent, healthy amount of debate and it could go wide. I mean, you got, you know, 60 legis, well, you know, how many are going to be, you know, not everybody is going to speak. But in this case, what the Democrat, House Democrats decided to do was to limit debate on the second reading. Again, that's where the substantive discussion is going on, amendments are made, questions can go back and forth, answers. They limited to one hour. So for all of this, get all the way to the Capitol, the very first time you get to discuss it, everybody in the room is limited to one hour total for the whole thing. Then you go to the next slide. Hopefully I have the line up here right where I did it. On top of that, okay, one hour, great. Guess we get in, you know, quite a bit. But then there's third reading where you continue. The legislators have learned more. They've thought it over. They've come up with some more perhaps arguments, some more statements in favor, whichever may be. What the Democrats did, and I'm going to say majority of them, the counts there, there were a few that did not go for this. And you can see them on the, on the screen there. Is under third reading, which is the last discussion point before it's passed either entirely or onto the other house. The House Democrats decided to shut down third reading and no debate. So when that photo there shows, shall the main question be now put? That means they shut it down. There was no chance to go to the podium. Well, I've, as you mentioned at the very beginning, I've served as, uh, RTD board director. So I'm used to debates on things. And during my time on RTD, I can say there were a handful, handful of times over eight years where the question was called debate was shut down. Usually there was some debate, kind of like the second reading. In all of those cases, I would never vote for that, never vote on the RTB board. And in same of, you know, when I was ever in the state, just like, it just seems like a very, very, um, oh, what's the word I want to go? It's chicken, chicken, I guess, um, to not want to at least hear the other side, even if you don't listen, to shut them up says that the system is broken. And to allow it time after time after time, now session after session, says occurred before. Um, you know, we, we have to take back at least one of those majorities down there so that debate can't be shut down. I think recent events have proven the value of free speech. And when we have this occurring at our state Capitol, it doesn't say much about the elected representatives that vote for things like this. And what should really be noted is when somebody shuts down the state representative or state senator by limiting debate in each one of those persons cases, let's say it's the state representative, you have shut down the voice for tens of thousands of voters. If you're state senator, more tens of thousands of people. So it wasn't just shutting down, um, Representative Bradley or one of the others that wanted their time at the podium. They were shutting down the voters of that district. And that's just, that's, that's not, that's not acceptable. So with that, I got pretty upset about that. You want to go to the next slide? Because I've seen this before and I'm tired of it not being highlighted um, by the mass media that you described. I put together a sign that said, if you can see in the photo there, the one that's congratulations, in this case, so I took photos of all of these. This is just a couple of examples and took the time to go stick it on their doors. Says, congratulations, Rep Lorena Garcia. The Golden Weenie Award for shutting down debate. And then there is a hot dog at the podium there saying debate closed. And then what did I put at the bottom? I forget at this point.
Democracy dies when debate is denied.
There we go. And I thought Lorena Garcia's door was one of the better photos because here she is trying to say with her regular sign, she has up there day to day, that the system isn't broken. It was built this way. I think, I think she's part of helping build a broken system. If she voted for that, and I made sure who I was giving it to, and unfortunately it was a majority. So I had a stack of these that I had to go stick on doors. And I went stuck them one by one by one. And I figured that was at least sending the message to him that people out there outside of the golden dome, the regulars were paying attention and recognizing that they were just too chicken to have debate and sit through, even if they limited to one hour under third reading. You know, okay, I'm not happy about that, but at least there was third reading debate and they didn't even want that.
Yep. Well said. I really appreciate you doing that. I think that's so important to these legislators. Like I said earlier, they, they just plan on nobody paying attention, the public not being aware of what they're doing. And it's so shameful when they shut down debate, when they just try and force through this agenda without public input, without input from other elected representatives who, like you said, we can't all be down there every day. You know what I mean? We're working jobs. We have obligations. So we elect these people to represent our communities, to be down there to, to pay attention, to vote, um, in the interests of our, in our communities, our neighborhoods, our businesses, our employers, our own businesses, you know? So when they don't allow them to debate, when they don't allow them to raise questions and bring these issues up to the, to the general assembly as a whole, it's absolutely shameful and it's totally anti-democratic, that's for sure.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm actually lucky in a way that I can take unpaid time from work. So it's like, I'm losing, but at least I can do that. That, and there's other people that are like, I can't take off my job. I'll be fired. So you know, and they had all that prep time and, but anyway, go ahead, keep going. Yeah, more of these. Congratulations, Rep Katie Stewart, rep, we put it in quotes, congratulations, Rep Sheila Leader. So they got these doors all over the place and they're about these back corridors. You just kind of want to wander around and I had my little checklist like, yep, put on that door. Yeah, put it on that door. The only person I really ran into, um, this was when I was just coming in. So that was, uh, was Rep Clifford, Chad Clifford. So he was walking at the door and I was walking in before the security area and walked up to him. I said, congratulations. And I gave us, it says the Golden Weenie Award for shutting down debate. He looks at me and he goes, because we've had a chat before about Tabor where he didn't know what he's talking about. And, uh, he just answered, okey dokey. Anyway, yeah.
Wow, wow. That's all you can say there. And then Natalie, to kind of, uh, wrap everything up, kind of end on a high note here. What can you tell us about this picture?
Yeah. So I think we really, um, owe a lot of appreciation to the, the state representatives, state senators. Uh, not all of them are included in this picture. Uh, there were, there's more of them who were down there as taper guardians. So these t-shirts say, uh, Colorado taxpayers bill of rights, uh, Tabor guardian. And they were given as, um, um, momentos or, um, small tokens. Enough to report on campaign finance, by the way, although, you know, they could, the value is not over $50. Um, but anyway, these, there's folks down there that did great to, they, they, you know, went down to that podium time after time with these bills and brought up good arguments and they pointed out as business owners, how much they were going to be harmed by the session. And they, businesses, especially restaurants, think again of that vendor fee. And you've got a restaurant with a slip margin and now the restaurant owner has to pay the credit card processing fee out of pocket for collecting taxes for the state. And these folks down here in this picture, again, not all of them, um, did a great job. I just noticed there's a Yoda there. Um, we have to make a t-shirt for Yoda. I, I have one of those. I will take that down there. Yoda can be in a Tabor guardian t-shirt too, because it is very wise. So it works out. All right. So these are great folks, uh, that were doing a good job trying to protect our pocketbooks. They put up with the frustration. They sat there through the hurry and wait, hurry and wait, hurry and wait, hurry and wait. You know, and they were taking time from their, um, other jobs and, you know, in their break periods. So it was just a, a thank you note that we were actually noticing those that were down there fighting for us, uh, which we expect from them, but that's what they were doing and they were doing the best that they could and appreciate it.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much, Natalie. I really appreciate all your efforts. Thank you for all the anecdotes and the awards for the good and the bad and the ugly down there. And it's so important this information gets out there to the voters, to the people of Colorado. And like you said, especially to business owners and people are just struggling to stay, to stay afloat here in Colorado where it's so difficult, so difficult for business owners to operate. And we just see these egregious attacks on, on these business owners. And so just thank you for everything. Anything to wrap up with?
Um, just for anybody who's motivated to think about, you know, if you've ever thought of running for one of these offices, no, those elections are not this year. They are next year. That would give somebody the time, uh, to get out in their community meetings, say, hey, I'd like to run for, you know, state Capitol, I'm tired of citizens not being heard down there and I'd like to be a representative and go down there, protect your pocketbook. And I know you're going to be running some videos at some point that'll talk about some of the districts that may have uh, some better options than another. So for anybody who's thinking about it and tired of sitting back and not being right in the fight, now's your time to step up, get organized and run in 2026.
Definitely. We need more people in the fight and we can win, folks. We can make Colorado a free state, but it's going to take the efforts of a lot of people putting together the work, um, put together their efforts and I know we can do it. I'm an optimist. Natalie and I are, uh, fighting and we need you in the fight. So I really appreciate you again, Natalie. Look forward to talking to you sometime soon. Uh, but thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Wonderful. Take care.